Welcome everyone, I call the October 22, 2025 Planning Commission Meeting to order. The main purpose of tonight's meeting is to hold a study session on the Urban Forestry Management Plan. Before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our hybrid meeting format. City Bothell is providing the option to attend this meeting either in person or remotely via Zoom. For those participating via Zoom, the chat and question functions are not available to ensure compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. We have a public comment agenda item at the beginning of the meeting, please limit all comments to three minutes. Please note that the City of Bothell does not tolerate verbal harassment, remember this during your comments. Also, as we are in an election season, I would like to remind everyone of certain campaign-related restrictions regarding public comment on campaigns and/or ballot measures. Public speakers generally cannot specifically address a campaign or ballot measure at the public meeting or during the public comment period. RCW 42.17A.555 prohibits government agencies from allowing the use of public facilities directly or indirectly for campaign purposes. Allowing speakers to speak in favor of or in opposition to a ballot measure or campaign during a public meeting or during a public comment period would violate this prohibition. Public comment will be allowed both in person and via Zoom. Those wishing to comment via Zoom were asked to submit an online form by 3:00 PM today. People wishing to submit written comments were also asked to submit those comments by 3:00 PM. Email was encouraged as well and will be acknowledged. Those in attendance may also make comments and have been asked to indicate their desire to comment on the sign-in sheets. The Imagine Bothell Notice, City website, and tonight's agenda all provided information to the public for providing comments. The video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting. For our phone-in callers, during staff presentations, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they are referencing so that everyone may follow along. At this point, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the attendance of commissioners. Commissioner Jones is absent and excused. Commissioner Westerback?
Here.
Commissioner Lever?
Here.
Commissioner Robson?
Here.
Commissioner Sills?
Here.
And Commissioner Augustafson is absent and excused. In addition, staff in attendance include Deputy Director Gates, Deborah Powers, Planning, Cameron Colvin Planner, and a number of other folks in the back. And I believe Director Gates would like to introduce someone?
I just wanted to take the opportunity to introduce our new Civic Spark fellow Jay Huckins here in the audience. Jay is going to be working on EV charging, infrastructure, inventorying, figuring out ways to increase those throughout the city. So excited to have her on board.
Welcome aboard, we look forward to hearing from you. And lastly, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For all meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when not speaking. If you are also streaming the live video feed, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. For commissioners, at specific breaks in the presentation, I'll be calling on members who wish to speak or ask a question. If you want to speak, please indicate this by raising your hand and I will call on you as I see you. This will help avoid the problem of having two people speaking at the same time. Identify yourself before you ask a question, make a motion, second a motion, or participate in debate. Please mute your microphone when not speaking. The first item on the agenda is public comment. The city has accepted visitor comment in writing as well as accepted signup sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Those speaking will have three minutes, written comments submitted to staff no later than 3:00 PM. We're forwarded to all commissioners and are part of the record. We did not receive any forwarded to us. And there are no citizens in the audience? Anyone in the Zoom room?
No, there's nobody in the Zoom?
No one in Zoom? And am I correct, assuming we did not receive anything?
Correct.
Email or written? Thank you. Then that will close the public comment period. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the October 15 minutes. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Commissioner Sills?
Commissioner Sills, I move to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes of the October 15 meeting, is there a second?
Commissioner Lever, second?
Alright, Commissioner Lever has seconded the approval of the October 15 minutes. Any discussion around those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor of approval of the minutes?
Aye.
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 Alright, the minutes of the October 15 meeting are approved unanimously, which leads us to our primary agenda item tonight. Study session on the Urban Forestry Management Plan. And I'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you. Good evening commissioners. So at our previous meeting on September 3rd, we went over some of the initial findings from the Urban Forest Management Plan, the public survey results that were conducted earlier this year, as well as initial draft recommendations or policy directions that we were kind of heading. So since that meeting, we've taken the feedback that we heard during that meeting, refined those draft recommendations, as well as conducted a public focus group meeting, as well as a public open house, to gather additional community input on those potential strategies. So tonight, we'll go over some common themes that we heard during that outreach and discuss some of the proposed recommendations that have potential policy or code implications in a bit more detail. So I'm joined tonight by Matt Pecome with Greenworks again to kind of lead us through that discussion. So with that, I will hand it over to him.
Thank you Cameron, nice to see everyone again today. Appreciate talking to y'all today and sharing what we've heard from your community, as well as the draft recommendations for the plan that's gonna go forward towards the end of the year. So update agenda here, just a very, very brief reminder of what we're talking about. I'm sure you all are well aware of this plan. A summary of the two feedback opportunities that Cameron mentioned, the focus group and the open house. Key takeaways that we heard. A discussion around a target goal, and if that's something that Bothell wants to pursue, and kind of a breakdown of how we might be able to get to that goal and what the different scenarios are. Of the draft recommendations, I believe you received a possible lengthy list of goals that you had a chance to review over the last few days. We will talk about your just general comments and feedback on that list in the kind of report progress feedback. But there are some specific topics that we think it's important to discuss with you all tonight. That dives maybe a little bit more detail than the list you got, mostly around, you know, code changes and some maybe some more contentious things that warrant a broader discussion with the group. And then some next steps, examples of, you know, some other collateral that we'll be producing in the future to support the implementation of this plan. So that's the general agenda. There will be, you know, this kind of first half will be me talking to you, and then I will take some breaks and there'll be different points of discussion and feedback along the way. And then we will open it up for, you know, general Q and A, of course, so. It's a project overview, here we are today, it's almost Halloween, here we are, October 2nd. Meeting with you, part of our ongoing, you know, process for engagement with you all, city staff, you know, different departments, we've met with focus groups, open houses, and then looking out into the rest of the calendar year, looking to iterate quickly, pick up your comments, and work with city council for adoption towards the end of the year. So that's the goal, that's the timeline. And just as a reminder, this is kind of our one-slide takeaway summary of kind of the thought process behind this plan. Recognizing kind of where you're at right now with the existing canopy, understanding all the potential impacts that are affecting the urban tree canopy citywide from things that affect canopy loss, like development, or die-off, or disease, or storms, or poor maintenance. New planting opportunities for both public and private lands, from priority planting areas to incentivizing private property owners, and then key aspects around health and maintenance because a majority of your canopy and the services and benefits they bring are your large existing trees. And so how do we do your best to, you know, maintain those and make sure that they continue on in the future and continue to grow? So we had a public focus group on September 22nd. We had 14 representatives from different groups, from private developers to environmental groups, conservation districts, homeowners, private property owners, arborists, people that we think will be kind of affected most and had some good feedback on some of the draft thoughts and ideas that we presented to you last time. And so the idea was to kind of preview messaging around valuing nature and, you know, approach to the goals that were in draft form. Collect feedback on some of those proposals to understand if anything was feasible and what the obstacles may be and if they had additional ideas. And with any planning process, the opportunity to build partnerships and get the word out there, create advocates, get people talking about it, get people in the same room. So you kind of initiate that ongoing collaboration and stewardship. Because it, you know, as we presented last time, this is both a public and private commitment to maintaining or increasing your urban canopy. So it's good to kind of get everyone on board as early as possible. So some key takeaways and ideas of the thoughts that we presented. There was a lot of interest around some sort of visual guide, like make it easier, make it intuitive, put it on your website, make a flyer, make something. And those can be catered towards, you know, typical street tree maintenance guidelines that you can, you pass around to help clarify intent and practices for street tree maintenance, which I think there's been some confusion or less-than-ideal practices happening. You know, developer toolkits, you know, how can these designs for your housing that is very critical to your community still try to prioritize or balance the priority of maintaining nature and maintaining some existing trees? What are some, you know, guides and recommendations there that provide that flexibility? And also make sure that it's translated into other, you know, typical languages spoken. Again, lowering the bar for access, making it clear, make it graphic, and simplify it. There were other, a couple of examples of some of those guides that were recommended around King County and Linwood that we can reference when we're generating those things. Provide clarity on qualifications and approaches to using arborists. I think that's a little bit of a black box for a lot of people who aren't in it every day as professionals. And so, you know, if it's not a, probably can't do a approved list of arborists, but providing resources, common resources through other organizations' websites, certifications that you should be looking for so they don't hire, you know, Matt Pecone who happens to have a chainsaw in his truck and just, you know, does whatever if you pay him money. So, you know, there's common standards that people just wanted to know, how do we do better? How do we use the right people? Who do we call? What do we ask for? So just kind of an FAQ around, you know, who to use and what they should be looking for. We did have a good conversation back and forth with the developers on the call. And so they just wanted us to use some caution on any incentives to make sure that they were like real, like real incentives. And so just recognizing the thresholds or things that make projects for them unfeasible and make sure we're not just recommending false incentives. And so the example that was given is just the FAR bonuses. And so, you know, more heights if you reduce the footprint of your building to maybe save some more, you know, trees or other, you know, natural landscaping. You know, in theory, that would work, but, you know, they talked about, oh, well, sometimes, you know, higher building triggers different construction type and that gets more expensive. And so just to be mindful of, you know, those trade-offs and making things, you know, not go unfeasible. So that was really good feedback. Something that he said was really successful and easy and should be like a slam dunk implementation is just requiring larger trees at planting. And so, you know, going above and beyond the typical inch and a half, two-inch caliber trees require if you are taking down larger trees to start larger when you are planting, because those are available. And that kind of couples with some of the maybe softer recommendations in the plan of the city. Reaching out to nurseries now and say, make sure like, hey, we want to make sure that these species are available, these sizes will be available. We want to mitigate some of these losses. And so finding those partnerships, I think is going to be important. And then just allowing room for some flexible solutions, don't be as rigid. And around, maybe he recommended, you know, tree drip line definitions. If there are other arborist-approved techniques to work around from like hand spading and, you know, and unique footing solutions. You know, the general conversation was can we be flexible and maybe treat instance by instance if we show that we are working towards saving, you know, more trees and, you know, still allowing for the density that's required. So that was a really good conversation, as well as, you know, people offering up ideas for, you know, maybe it's not a free tree giveaway, but it's a free water bag giveaway or voucher or something like that. Helps things to help them maintain, maybe it's tools, you know, maybe it's something else. And so, you know, lowering the bar for people who don't have the resources or the knowledge. And that goes with kind of the last bullet, which is tree care workshops, hands-on training, you know, getting your hands dirty, show me what I'm doing. And maybe that can partner with, you know, city staff. Maybe it's a joint city staff, public, you know, workshops that people can learn all together and share ideas and share challenges and get people, the community, talking with the city and build that relationship as well. So overall, it was a really, really great conversation, people were super engaged. You know, it was a small overall group, but a large four-focus group. You know, it was an online virtual call for 90 minutes. So 14 people, everyone had a chance to speak and share their ideas and it was a good spread of, you know, feedback and representation. Open House, it was a couple of weeks ago. Matt from Planet Geo and my colleague Celia and myself were there in your conference room. And you may or may not have attended there, but that was pretty good. We had 20 people turnout, really passionate, engaged folks, a lot of questions. Just trying to understand what the plan was and what this plan could influence or not influence. Had some great feedback and overall discussion there, excuse me. And so we set up these boards that you will see here, kind of categorized by different things, which the first one being supporting private landowner tree maintenance. So how can you better serve the community and make sure they're maintaining? And so we gave them some options of like, what would you like to see, pick two or three? And again, the public echoed the focus group, some sort of resource guide for working with arborists and basic tree maintenance care, visual guide, how-to tree manual. So all that very kind of consistent, kind of a bubbling to the top. You know, help increase your capacity for tree care by more education to the public. So that's kind of a pretty, pretty clear takeaway. And there, you know, from both guiding and then, you know, the financial burden or, you know, resources available, whether it's time, whether it's finding subsidies to support, you know, other people coming in and helping them or them doing themselves tools. So that's, I think that's just kind of the overall theme there. Regulating tree removals, and so we introduced the idea of this kind of tree permits or landmark tree program. Sorry, I shouldn't say landmark tree, typo, because heritage is different. And so kind of defining that, and so that was generally very well supported. People felt like there should be an avenue for trying to, a greater effort in preserving the larger trees above a certain threshold. And we'll talk about that later in this workshop. And so people want to protect those large mature trees, right? There was some really interesting feedback for some folks about thresholds, the thresholds that exist right now in your, in your development code and the exemptions of lots under a half acre essentially. And so that's one of the things we'll be talking about is what's happening a lot of times is those one-half acre exemptions aren't for that like single-family home, you know, detached home that's been there for 50 years. It's, the issues are coming up on subdivisions essentially. When there's a large swath of land and then all the lots are subdivided and they might be under that threshold. And so the whole subdivision is then exempt from having to adhere to the retention goals. And so that's something that might be reconsidered and thinking about what's the best way to do that while still allowing for, you know, the housing to occur. So that was, that was an interesting perspective on that. And that's something that we want to make sure we're considering. And so those smaller lots, like noted, are likely to be more common. As you get denser, as you start subdividing, that will be an ongoing issue. Working with new development, so, you know, we offered up ideas around those FAR bonuses or setback requirements. You know, how do we work with developers to prioritize tree clusters and mature trees and, you know, offset some restrictions and guidelines and maybe make it more of a toolkit or a list of options that allows the development to happen, but then the preservation of the trees? And so we make sure that it's still feasible, but, you know, there are some options that we'll be talking through that could provide some flexibility, right? And so still keeping the intent of the new development, but also making sure that those mature trees are preserved. So definitely deep interest, I think that was kind of the somewhat self-selecting folks that show up to these. Obviously, they're passionate about the trees and they're seeing that development is a large cause of the recent reduction in canopy. And so there certainly was deep interest from the folks attending that, you know, there's some sort of compromise or shift there to help preserve the in the future. Voluntary programs, looking at incentives for, you know, what would it take for you as a private landowner just to add more trees? You know, it's going to take everyone, the city can't add all the trees and still maintain, you know, your canopy. You know, it has to also be that for that private partnership. And so, you know, the top idea was a tree voucher program or a tree giveaway, pretty, pretty common. And then the water bags or, you know, other install guides were also, you know, considered and voted for. Yeah, and that's the other thing around, this kind of goes back to the previous one about, you know, the reduction in parking minimums was debated as a good or bad thing. And so, you know, part of the conversation today is, is do we take that as an opportunity to, you know, obviously, the main point of that is so that buildings can get denser and so it's not all parking and you can get infill and it's workable. But is there some sort of compromise or trade-off there where some of that space is dedicated back to nature in some way that still, you know, makes the housing density feasible? And then we set up a map and a list of categories of like, okay, of the public trees, because the city's going to have resources to plant new trees on public lands, you know, outside all these other changes and incentives. And so where should you start, you know? And so we gave these different options from kind of zoning areas most likely to be developed in the future, infill around areas that have already been developed to kind of catch up and mitigate the recent losses, public stream corridors, street tree infill, or to start to infill parks and open space to move towards the more kind of tree cluster model, which has a lot of larger benefits for shade, for heat island, for habitat, for stormwater. Kind of once you get to that kind of half, or sorry, quarter acre, you know, canopy cluster, you start seeing some increased benefits and so you can start infilling your parks and your other open spaces to get more of those clusters. And you see a lot of those right now in your critical areas across the city. And so it's just kind of mimic that back into that, you know, overall canopy. So the preference, as you've probably been reading, is there was a clear preference for prioritizing places that have already been developed. So start where you know there have been losses. And so recognizing there and seeing if the, you know, public spaces around those areas can start, you know, mitigating those local losses. And maybe even you start incentivizing or prioritizing outreach in those neighborhoods for the private benefits that you would consider resources allowing in those areas that have been recently developed so that those localized benefits stay the same in the city. I'm going to pause there because I need to drink and that was a lot. And we're going to dive into another meaty topic, so any thoughts or questions now, or should I keep going?
Commissioners, questions, comments? Commissioner Sills?
Commissioner Sills, thank you for that, that's really interesting to see the focus group and what they suggested. It did sound like to me that in the open-ended conversation, no one brought up permits. So if I have that wrong, please let me know. So it sounded like that was a category that we asked them about. I think kind of the details are important there when, if we're looking at a permitting process. I think we don't want a situation like we put that in place and then all of a sudden people are rushing to cut down trees before that goes into effect or any, you know, negative impact that might occur as a result of that. And I think also just what does that look like and what does that really achieve what we want? I think the incentives are a lot more powerful in terms, and sounds like that's what people are looking for. And I would just be a little skeptical of a permitting process that wasn't really working with people to, you know, identify if it's a tree with disease or should be, you know, is a hazard. Like, and you talked about that a little bit, but I think just, I think there may be better avenues and I think other municipalities that have done that, but I'm not sure how well it's worked and that people are asking for that.
Other comments? So I like the idea of a preferred tree list. I think that'll help with availability if our local nurseries know that those are trees that are being focused on. And more availability should help bring down cost if they're growing those trees. I think that's particularly important, you talked about landscape strips as well. We've all seen trees in landscape strips which are upheaving the sidewalk. So I think that's really, really important. The other thing I think we should look at when we talk about all these things is what an appropriate maintenance and establishment period is for trees. Doesn't do much good to put them in and let them die in the first year or two. So, and I don't know what that right number is, but how long does a tree need to get established in this climate? To then be left on its own? So that would be useful information as well.
Totally. Yeah. Um, I'm not going to dive into those comments yet. I think those details, um, are part of the implementation piece, uh, of this plan that we'll, we'll be exploring, uh, and, and for the rest of the year. Um, uh, and those are all being considered, um, those have not been finalized, the permitting process, uh, the resources. Um, and know that the rest of this process is going to include some sort of prioritization of recommendations because it's a lot. Um, and you're not going to be able to implement all at once. Um, and so we'll have, um, you know, a list of priorities and maybe, maybe the permitting isn't the first step. Maybe there are other things like you mentioned that, um, are more important. So we'll, we'll be following up on that for sure.
Great. Thank you.
All right. If there's no other comments about.
One more, one more.
Oh, sorry.
Just because I've been through this a few times and staff knows this stuff better than me. Um, I've had to plant street, street trees a few times. We do have in our code that we have to, well, when you build, you have to bond for, I think it's two years. And you have to make sure that your, your public street trees and planting survive for at least two years, which I guess is the idea, like gets them established. And then you can get the bond released. So we do have a clause in our code for that unless it's changed. And, uh, there's a street tree list too. It's a little bit hard to locate. I had to confirm it with one of the city engineers. We do have a street tree list that we use. So a map, you've probably run into that, but, um, and maybe we're going to change that up. I don't know, but I just want to be.
We are.
Okay. That, those two things do exist. So I saw them come up in the comments. So maybe, um, people who don't do this all the time just aren't aware. So wanted to bring that up. Thanks.
Yep. Thank you. All right.
Okay. Please proceed.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so we're going to talk about, I lost my mouse. Sorry. Goals. Um, so, uh, here is a comparison of a lot of your cities around you. Um, and cities that have gone through this process, uh, somewhat recently. And their, uh, canopy coverage and their goals and their goal gear. Um, and so we wanted to reach the topic. Um, we've definitely talked a lot more about kind of levers and strategies and, and code and incentives. Um, but does the city also want to join, uh, most of these other cities, um, in giving yourself a goal? Um, and what is that reasonable goal? And so, um, like you see in green, uh, you're at 44% within city limits and 41% in your urban growth boundary. Um, which is mostly comparable to some of these other cities, um, a little more coverage. You're in the upper end, uh, I would say. Um, and so, um, you know, you can see a lot of these goals, uh, show a kind of a steady or slight increase. Um, uh, one or two cities, uh, including your, your neighbor, Woodenville, um, re- recognizes a decrease. And perhaps they're going through a similar, uh, you know, in- increase in population as you are, recognizing that there is development, but want to hang on to, uh, still a pretty decent percentage of 40% coverage. Um, and so we wanted to talk about that today. Um, and then we'll talk about the timeframe. Um, the, the things I'm going to show you today were based off of kind of a 25-year timeframe. Um, starting, you know, at the beginning of next year, uh, at 2051, you can see a lot of these, um, plans go to 2050. Um, there's, there's a, um, there's a good case for, for making it in 2044, which is, uh, to align with your housing goals. Um, so we want to talk about that because that might influence some of the details of the other, um, recommendations. And so we talk about mitigation of an existing large tree. Um, we can project what it's going to take to replace that large tree in the timeframe of your goals. Um, and so that's why we want to do this. And so to make the metrics and the data make sense. If you are going to set a goal, we want it to be reasonable and we want it to be achievable. Um, all that being said, we are not a predictor of the future. These are very rough numbers based off of, uh, general estimates and averages of, of things. And so I want to caveat what you're about to see. Um, with that, it's, this is not, uh, an exact science. Um, and we can only, uh, you know, you know, make a, a rough estimate of, of where you're going to be in 20, 25 years, right? Uh, and hopefully that makes sense. Okay. So, uh, PlanGeo, uh, not only did, uh, which you have seen a, uh, you know, a change analysis of your canopy from 2015 to 2023, last eight years. Um, they also went ahead and crunched some numbers based off some assumptions that I will show you in the next two slides. Um, about general averages of existing tree growth and, uh, loss due to development and all these kind of fluctuating things, um, that are happened based off of some assumptions. Um, and brought up some, some different scenarios of where that landed for your goals again at 2051. Um, to get to kind of no net loss, um, or to have, you know, different percentages increased. And the number of trees you would have to plant as a city per year above and beyond what you're doing. And so, um, this is, does not include any like tree mitigation for, for trees that are lost. Like if a street tree goes down, you replace it. Doesn't count. Um, it's more than what you're doing, uh, you know, treat, new trees. Um, and so these are the different scenarios and I think the message here, uh, which I'll also get into a couple of slides, but, um, there has to be recognition that with development, with the removal of mature trees and the fact that you're planting new trees, that your canopy is going to decrease in the short term. Period. Um, uh, so how do you frame that with the community? Um, what can you do about that? What are the different scenarios? And where do you ultimately want to end up when this kind of spurt of development, uh, to achieve your housing goal kind of peters off? Um, and maybe you start to see, um, you know, those mitigated trees, uh, start to grow and, and mature and to gain and to go back to where you are today and then to maybe even go above and beyond that. Um, so that's kind of the general messaging around this, um, is that there are, um, you know, certain things. Um, it's a lot of resources, four hundred trees. It doesn't have to be all public trees. It can be, this can be private trees. This can be tree trees. This can be park trees. Um, this can be the extra developer trees. Um, these are any of these are, these are non-denominational trees. They're anyone's trees. Um, and, but it's a lot of resources, right? And obviously you're not going to not do any trees, but if we, we just did that scenario just to show you, um, you know, the general, um, loss to development. And then the just kind of, uh, annual die-off, uh, of tree canopy, uh, naturally. Uh, or just due to, you know, being stressed in a, in an urban environment. Um, there is a, a, you know, generalized, uh, loss of like a, a percent a year or something like that. And that is cumulative and, you know, compound interest and that's up over 25 years. So not saying we're going to get there, um, but that's if you, you just kind of abandoned trees, like how, how they might, they go. Um, so that is just kind of the general framing of what these goals mean. I know it's, you know, it's tempting to say, oh, we're at 44%, let's like, let's hit 50, you know, let's, let's be, you know, like, uh, Kenmore. Um, which is great and it's admirable, but just know that like that is above and beyond, you know, uh, even more than adding four hundred. It's a lot of resources, right? And so just kind of understanding the commitment of resources to the goal. Um, and, uh, you know, that's if you don't change anything, right, in the code. And so that's where this code comes in is this dip, um, can maybe be scooched up a bit, uh, as a percentage or two. Um, if you make some code changes to reduce losses. Um, if you pres- preserve those large canopy trees, um, that are existing now. Um, or if you really, uh, you know, mitigate and, and do a lot of infill early on, those will have chance to mature and, and catch up quicker, right? Um, so those are the, the triggers and the leverage points, um, that we're looking at. Um, once again, just to reiterate, this is a graphic. This is not an exact science. Um, but it's just to kind of show you relative, um, to what we're talking about as far as the level of commitment and the expectations. Um, here's a lot of numbers, uh, you might be able to look at it afterwards. These are all the assumptions made in that graphic, um, from 25 years to the mortality of new trees. So new trees being planted, um, there's a certain expectation of die-off. Um, there's a mortality of existing trees, like I said, 1% compounded annually over many years. Um, there's annual loss due to development. So this is actually three hectares, uh, or seven and a half acres a year. Um, as projected from the, the canopy change that PlanetGeo, um, just assessed. So just kind of using that same rate of loss of canopy and, and continuing that on. Um, that's where that comes from. And then, um, you know, natural regeneration and then canopy growth. This is like self-seeding, you know, in open spaces kind of a thing. That's about a half percent gain every year. You're, you know, obviously large trees are, are continuing to grow and, and contribute to those canopies. Um, so yeah, it does not include maintenance. And then I also want to caveat, uh, so this is a breakdown, too many, too much detail, but just know that there was some thought that went into the, the kind of diversity of trees needed and, you know, planting different tree sizes, um, from, from giant, you know, oak trees to, you know, smaller street trees. Um, and that should all contribute. Um, so as we're thinking about this, as we're talking about it, as you're communicating it out, um, as, you know, whatever the final result is, um, just kind of, it's important to acknowledge that the development, the housing goals will very likely lead to short-term canopy decreases. Um, there's also the caveat that when we do these analyses and we look at canopy, none of the mitigation trees or infill trees are represented in this at all because they're tiny, right? There, they do not show up in these type of analysis. And so all the recent projects, uh, that you're doing, your efforts that you're doing now, um, are not showing up, but they will, right? Though all of those will show up in 10 years, right? And so that's going to contribute to your canopy growth. And that's really important to know and to communicate out is that, you know, you're already making these efforts and they will show up in 10 years. Um, and so it's like, like I said, the target years, um, you know, thinking about, you know, the housing target aligning to that seems like a good, comfortable fit. Um, if you go those extra five years or so, um, up to 2050 or 2051, um, you might be able to, um, you know, depending on when you feel like development's going to taper off, um, i- i- counting for the mitigation as part of that development and then giving that a few years to catch up back to your kind of baseline or target goal. Um, so, um, that's, this is kind of what I was explaining is, is once we set a target goal timeframe, then we can use that timeframe in our landmark tree permit process, right? And you say, oh, you know, you're removing a landmark tree that's, you know, X in- inches DBH or, and has a canopy of this size. Therefore, um, the mitigation will be tied to that for, that needs to be replaced in 20 years, right? And so you might have to plant more smaller trees or less large trees. That's where the kind of larger tree size can come in. And so we want to make these metrics, you know, uh, usable, um, and, and relatable. And so, um, you know, thinking about that replacement value, um, and, you know, obviously bring in diversity and all the other things. So I am going to stop there. Is there any thought on a target number, um, for this process or anything like that?
Commissioners?
They're also, the right answer could be, we don't want to do a target. We just want to make sure we're doing our best to do all these other things, like the implementation, the, the code changes. All those things are still super valuable. And if you don't want to tie that to a number in the future.
Commissioner Laver?
Thank you. Apologies. Something happened to my camera. It's not really turning on. Um, uh, I actually, um, I, I would, uh, recommend that we do have a target, particularly knowing the effects, uh, that removing trees has on climate. And I really appreciated the scenarios that you had, even though, you know, we know there are scenarios and we don't really know what, but sorry. Apologies. Um, but, um, and I definitely will be more, uh, towards the aggressive, uh, the 4% canopy, uh, knowing that, uh, we definitely know that this is, will require an investment in a really aggressive targeted campaign to A, get the funds and make sure that this is track and it happens. But I, I believe that this is where we really need to make sure that you say we care about, uh, keeping that balance. This is where we need to really measure and, and really put all the resources that we have to make sure that we are protecting the environment as we develop our city. Thank you.
Other commissioner comments? Commissioner Robson?
I'm going to say something that might be a little bit of a hot take. Um, I say we only go for the 1% increase in canopy. Um, and not just because 45 is a nice round number, but, um, we do need a lot of resources. And as climate cha- nobody knows what climate change is going to bring for us. We might plant a whole bunch of trees and get 10 years in a row of scorches. And the trees don't grow. And we will have invested all this money, uh, for things that are going to fail. And from the perspective of climate change, we need to do a lot of mitigation coming up for that. And trees are wonderful and beautiful and I love trees. Um, I feel like we need to be working on triage. Um, triage, shoring up the resilience in the most immediate sense within the community. And that is why I'm saying that I do believe that we should try to be increasing our tree coverage. Um, but max, we can't max out every goal we have. Let's just be real. That's not how things work. So if we're thinking of this from the perspective of preparing for future, um, most immediate sense, I think we need to then be a little more conservative with things that we won't ultimately see the benefit of, we don't even know if they'll last at all. Uh, we don't, we can't predict what the future will be like. Will we be San Diego? We don't know. Um, by 2044. So that's my perspective.
I just want to, uh, I want to go on the record as pun appreciated. Thank you. Um, and, uh, part of this plan that we might not have, uh, explained yet is a, uh, climate change adaptation, uh, vulnerability, uh, document that looks at the species of trees that are most likely to happen. And yes, it is, using the best science is not a crystal ball. Um, but just wanted to, to clarify that that will be part of the process of the tree selection and the maintenance needed to keep those established as best as possible in the uncertain, uh, future and climate that is coming. So, uh, comment heard. Uh, just wanted to, to make sure that people were aware that that is part of this process is, is that thinking is, is embedded.
That's very valuable. Thank you.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Westerbeck?
That's Commissioner Westerbeck. Um, just to, to, uh, echo what Commissioner Robson said, um, I think I recall, um, which showed we lost about 1.5% of cam- canopy. Is that the right number from the report over the last 10 or 20 years? I think it was.
He's nodding.
Yeah. So, um, 1% in some ways seems really good because it's a little aspirational, like, uh, Commissioner Robson said, without, you know, getting out of our ski tips, but helps us get just a little bit further along than we've been. And maybe you put some back, some of those that can't be back that we lost. And I was actually pretty surprised, pleasantly surprised that considering all the development we've seen in the city over the last decade, um, that we only lost 1.5%. Um, so to me, that seems like a nice sort of happy medium, at least for the next decade and to see how it works out. Uh, given that we're going to try all these new, new policies. So I just want to echo what you said.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Robson?
I just wanted to ask, oh, did I see a number that the majority of tree loss in Bothell is due to private owners as opposed to development? Did I see that or am I, was it a dream?
Uh, Pa, I don't, I can't speak to your dreams. Sorry. Uh, but, uh, it is, it was due to, uh, it was in the, uh, medium density residential zones. And so that's. And so that is likely due to development, yes, larger, larger developments without, you know, scrutinizing exact locations of things. So but it was mostly on private land, which includes larger developments.
Other comments? I I'd like to be sure we don't lose that passing slide that showed regulatory changes could mitigate that loss. I I think that's, yeah, the code revisions. I I think that's important. I think we should look hard at that. And I I think we all recognize we have goals which could be in conflict. We feel very strongly, we need to increase the housing stock. When you build, some trees are lost. That's just an unavoidable fact. But I think we should look to the extent we can at those revisions to, you know, we need to bring these goals into closer alignment. I don't think they'll ever be completely aligned, but recognize that that's a conflict we have. I think we should look at something somewhere along the lines of the wetland mitigation, where removing trees has to come with some replacement trees, you know, maybe not one to one, but, you know, look at some replacement during that process. I am inclined to agree with not being overly aggressive in a goal that exceeds our resources and might be futile. I also like the idea of 2044, which bring those two goals into alignment. So, Commissioner Sills?
Yeah, Commissioner Sills, I think I agree that I'm I'm for planting more trees. I think around 400 per year seems ambitious. I do think though that, and I've said this kind of in a different context, but we should really prioritize acquiring more public spaces, like the Wayne Golf Course. Because as we get, you know, all sorts of housing options and people might not have the backyard with the trees on their private land, they should have access to green areas, green spaces within a 10 minute walk. So really thinking about how we can think about our land acquisition process as a city to preserve those public spaces where we could maybe better maintain trees or, or, you know, preserve this canopy, have those ambitious goals. And then we are moving slightly away from kind of relying on private landowners to do the right thing. But again, like making sure that every resident has access to that and is benefiting. So I guess that's kind of like a complicated answer, but I would say code revisions is very vague and broad. Not sure I totally want to align with that until I know what those are. And yeah, that we, I think we need to be smart and strategic about doing this the right way.
Just to clarify, since two of you mentioned it, that is exactly what we're going to be talking about next. Is is going through some code recommendation shifts that can, you know, move you, move those dots up, right? And some of them are low hanging fruit that can align you with a lot of other cities and their codes. And some of them might be a little more in conflict or worthy worthy of deeper discussion or politically unfeasible. But that's what we we are going to be talking about today in the rest of this work session. So any other thoughts before we dive into the that likely vibrant conversation? Any other thoughts on goals? Or maybe we can circle back after we talk through some of those code things and see how you're feeling after that conversation and talk about timeline and goals after that.
I see nodding heads, so let's proceed.
Nodding heads is great. Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go out of presentation mode. This is the interactive part of our talk. So some of these, these are kind of what I call low hanging fruit. Maybe they they are not as easily digestible in your community, in your situation. But this is kind of the things we found in comparing and doing, I'm blanking on the word, like a assessment against other cities and and looking at codes. And these align with some of the goals that you reviewed in your packet around reviewing and updating your code, strengthening preservation, planting requirements and mitigation thresholds. So this is a list of things that we thought, you know, are, oops, are a little bit easier to implement as they are kind of just kind of a shift or slight change from what you're already doing. And I made these dots in case there was consensus around yea or nay. I will turn them green or red live in front of you. So first things up, you already define a significant tree in your code and you define that at eight inches. And a lot of places around the regions defined it as six inches. And so all it's doing is saying, you know, mitigation or potentially the permitting process would apply to a slightly smaller tree, which makes it slightly more, you know, it allows for mitigation of trees that are on their way to maturity and shifting that. And so then that's tied to a tree removal permitting system that at at a minimum just tracks all the removal of significant trees. It could be cost neutral. It could be, I think someone, one of the staff members was mentioning another city that it's a free process. It just allows the city to keep track of everything and allows it's kind of another opportunity for education, saying, hey, we noticed you're you're doing that. Here's some ideas on replanting or whatever it is. And it's another opportunity for collaboration with private landowners. If you do have that landmark tree, which is, you know, a significant, significant tree, those are your 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 big mature trees with large canopy, they're doing a lot of work. We see kind of a a common threshold around 30 to 36 inches of of diameter of the trunk. And then that would allow you to kind of limit their removal or again, set up goal based mitigation requirements that are stronger than a one to one replacement that again tie into canopy replacement. We see, so right now your parking lot code, and we'll have a chance to talk through all these, don't worry. Lower parking trot, parking lot requirement threshold. So you have requirements for like number of trees or number of amount of landscape in a parking lot. And right now your threshold is anything 20 stalls or larger. And a lot of cities go as low as 10 stalls or larger. And so that's allowing again, any type of asphalt or hardscape to receive, you know, shade to reduce those heat island effects and and other things. And then related to that, your code currently says a tree every 10 stalls. Commonly see something a little lower. There are some cities that go as low as six, not not asking to be that aggressive. But that's another way to kind of like ratchet it up a little bit and find some opportunities for a little more shade where it's needed most, which is parking lots and streets. Those impervious, hard, dark surfaces, right? Also, you could write in a mechanism that triggers parking lot upgrades to code when there's like a renovation on a property, similar how you might do it for, you know, accessibility or ADA upgrades above a certain threshold. So you can, you can look at that as a trigger. And then what was already mentioned today is you have a couple places in your, like embedded in your code that lists certain species. And it's buried and it could be confusing. And we've also heard from staff that that they're they're in different places and they're a little conflicting. And so we recommend just take them all out and reference a centralized, easily accessible tree species list document that we are going to organize by these different scenarios to make it really easy and clear of what trees are going to do the best in what locations. And so that's a, that's a big meat of the implementation part of this plan. And it will have those adaptive lists natives identify the planting planter size for different species, species you can plant under power lines to reduce maintenance conflicts down the line. You know, heritage, you know, if heritage based or landmark tree based qualifiers or mitigation species that you want to encourage, however you want to organize it, really clear lists so that someone knows, I need to think about this and I have this scenario, it's really easy to find and make it clear. So those are the things that we're seeing lots of other cities do that we thought would be worthy of of consideration. And those are the the recommendations that live, you know, in the plan as of as of right now. So I'm gonna pause there. Is there anything that seems like an easy win or slam dunk here that maybe, you know, you think we can, we can easily move forward with?
All right, commissioners, want to just start from the top and kind of get a sense of the group? So significant tree definition, what do we think? Commissioner Sills?
I'll just, for expediency, I'm a no on the first four and a yes on the last four.
Okay. Others? Commissioner Robson?
Thank you. What makes me anxious is that these all sound great to me, which to me sounds like I don't know enough about what we're talking about to be able to make a decision about this. I'm I'm actually really curious as to why you don't approve of the first four, not because I disagree with you, but because what am I overlooking? Could you, could you elaborate on that, Commissioner Sills?
I don't see the value in tracking removal of all significant trees on private land. I mean, there's a lot of ways you could do that besides a permitting system, in my opinion. And I think it's sort of opens the door to then for limiting the removal of landmark trees and eventually it just seems like a slippery slope to me and I I'm not in favor of that. And I just, I don't really think six inches should be designated as significant tree. It just seems oner, it just seems onerous to me. And I think, again, we should develop incentives and education programs and, you know, plant more trees. I I just don't see the value in moving in that direction. And then the last four, they just make sense to me. I think we are generally not loving surface parking lots and and so that's an easy way to add canopy. And I think, you know, the last one is just, you know, simplifying, which I think makes a lot of sense, too.
And I'll jump in real quickly. This is a bit of a preview of kind of what we'll be working through next year in, you know, updating our tree code and in landscaping requirements. So a lot of the specifics don't need to be agreed upon now, but this type of feedback that you are providing gives us some general direction of what to look at and bring forward next year.
Yeah, just to build on that, thanks Cameron for clarifying the the kind of the teeth of this plan. These are a list of recommendations that this plan is going to be making to the city. This is not codifying those changes. There's, like Cameron said, this is a separate official process. Like, we're not going to be rewriting all the letter of the code through this plan. So you don't, yeah, we don't need to work out every single detail. This is just kind of to get a sense of what would be feasible in the future.
Commissioner Westerbeck?
Commissioner Westerbeck here, I just want to say I'm in 100% agreement with Commissioner Sills. I was thinking the same thing, the first four are maybe a little over the top and the last four are a great idea. And I just want to say as someone who has done street trees, planted them, we actually really sweated over which trees we only had to plant two for a recent project. But my two partners and I, we really wanted the the right tree. And so to have have something that helps us with that is great because we cared about how it looked, how high it was going to be, how hard it was going to be maintained, to maintain whether it was going to live or not. So despite the reputation of developers not caring, we cared a lot about the tree we're going to put out there. Except we we have opinions on, as we walked around town, which ones we liked better than others and which ones we thought looked, you know, the best and do the best in five or 10 years. So love the idea of the right tree, right place.
Any other comments? I would also agree with the bottom four. I'm un- uncertain about the top four. I'm not particularly concerned about a no fee permit system if it's associated with the development. If you're clearing a property, identifying what you're doing, I think has some value. So I I could go for that. Do we currently have a landmark tree definition?
No, you do not.
I I can see problems with it, but I can also see benefits, so I'm ambivalent. And I look, there's a property not too far from here with us, what would I, I would assume would be a landmark tree right in the middle of it. And if that's preserved, the property is not developable. And, you know, I think there is a problem with requiring private owners to bear the cost of public benefit. I I understand that. On the other hand, landmark trees have some value. So how do we how do we look to encourage that? Six Oaks did it, you know, they preserved six oak trees as part of the development. That seems to be doing real well several years later. So maybe encouraging rather than mandating. I'd like to explore that more without being mandatory on it.
Yeah, I think the the intent here, and just to just to clarify, isn't to completely ban the removal. It it's setting up a definition and a threshold for mitigation and saying like, hey, if we're, if that's going to be removed, it it allows you to define, you know, oh, well, maybe you should plant back three trees in its place to make up for it. And so just setting up a definition and a threshold for you to be able to mitigate and define, you know, even like, let's, for instance, the scenario is is a larger development that's that's has to clear cut a lot of lands, you know, being able to, you know, replace some of that value back. You know, it's a difference between, you know, the the way that the code is is written now is a percentage of the existing trees, you know, the the DBH, the the diameter on the property. And so if there's a piece of land that has a bunch of tiny trees, you know, you clear cut those, you have your development. You don't require a lot of mitigation because you're not losing much. But if there's the same sized land with a forest on it that you're losing and you have this goal of of maintaining, you know, or or slightly increasing your goal, how do you make up for that? Right? And so, you know, it it sets up a threshold for those mitigation goals, looking at, you know, other mechanisms that you can also put in place from a fee in lieu, which might be challenging to manage, to work in lieu on public land. But it just sets a definition of like, here's a landmark tree at this size, like we want to replace that value somewhere. So that's that's really the goal. And I think there's flexibility on what you do with that definition, but it just sets a threshold.
Can I pipe in? Sorry, real, real quick. This this conversation around these these options goes back to the chart that Matt showed with the sort of the bumping up of that dip from experience with other jurisdictions without considering these things, that 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 bump up won't happen. We can hope for that bump to happen. But the code that we have currently, if we continue on like that red, will, it'll have a larger dip just without considering how to how to look towards, I'd say reasonable approaches to future strategies. So. And, and we wouldn't, what Matt said about creating the definitions, it creates that opportunity. If you have a heritage tree that is a defined tree, well, what are the gives and takes? What are the, the variations we can say, well, if there's a landmark tree that's defined, here's what you get if you can retain it. If you can't retain it because it's in the wrong place, it's smack in the middle of the property, it's not gonna preclude development from happening. So we can, we can work through all of that. And that's in, in sort of the next year phase.
Commissioner Robson, then Commissioner Westerbeck.
Thank you, um, along those lines, um, I think that, that having a definition for a significant tree and a landmark tree, I don't see why there would be a problem in defining them. And can I just say, uh, if, if I'm understanding this correctly, we're talking about a 32 inch diameter of a tree for an established landmark tree?
The trunk, yeah, DBH stands for, it's an arbitrary term for diameter at breast height, which is about four, four feet from the ground. And so it's the trunk.
That's a big tree.
It is.
Yeah, there should be a name for that in the code, quite frankly, like that's not a tree. That's like a elephant, I don't know how to define it.
Community member is what that is.
That's a, that's a community member, exactly.
That tree's been here longer than you, you know, it's, you know, that, and that's what we're trying to establish. And that's, it's very, very, very common, um, to have a definition of that. And what you do with that definition, like Christian was saying, is up to you. But it allows you to have that conversation of like, hey, we noticed you're cutting down six landmark trees on this property. You know, what can we do about that?
One reason why I like it is because it communicates a value. If you have a tree with like, the, the trunk is wider than my coffee table, like, that's, yeah. We need to put in our, as a city, we should recognize those kinds of trees that as having unique value. And I don't think, I'm for that. I, I think if nothing else, it just gives them value. As a community, I think we should have those values.
Commissioner Lever? Oh, no, sorry, Commissioner Westerbeck, and then Commissioner Lever.
I'll try and be fast, Commissioner Lever. This is, uh, because of this particular topic, I have been on properties where, you know, a client wanted to develop and there was a huge tree and we all wanted to keep the tree. So I could see the, not necessarily establish landmark tree definition, but at least saying any tree over whatever, 32 inches, 30 inches, something like that. We offer incentives and I think, uh, and earlier in the presentation, you mentioned reduction of setbacks possibly. I really think, I've been on multiple sites where if we didn't have such aggressive setbacks, I know we made them smaller. Yay, staff and everything for, for doing that, that was awesome. But even five and 10 feet can really be a lot. And if you're allowed, um, I know people don't love to hear this, but if you're allowed to go zero lot line, the building code has plenty of provision for fire rated wall systems, where you could push the building off to, you know, an L shape or a courtyard or something like that and preserve a tree. There's some amazing projects that, that are allowed to do that and most of the world allows that. Well, we're, we're kind of outliers in North America by not allowing us to use the entire lot. So that to me would be an incentive, a attractive incentive to say, if you keep that tree or a little one of the five or whatever, we will allow you, and like we did with the middle housing code, we allowed a reduction of setback. It might be superseded by our new development regulations, but we allowed the smaller setback if you preserved a tree. So we already have established that idea in our code as well. So, um, I think we should really research like, okay, if you're, if you're willing to keep one of these massive trees and it's, it is a community member, it's an asset, you need to give, we need to have some give and take. We can't have this and this, like, oh, you still gotta respect the 10 foot or the five foot setback. Well, you know, frequently on these small infill projects, to make it viable, you need a certain amount of units or square footage that you gotta, just to make it pencil out. And so, hey, I'd love to keep the tree, might even enhance the project, but I really need some flexibility on, on where I can put the building. So I think that'd be a strong incentive, um, to at least have in our back pocket in the code. Thanks.
Commissioner Lever?
Thank you, Commissioner Lever here, so I basically like, I appreciate all of them. And with, it comes to the permitting, I just think about the capacity constraint that the city may have in terms of enforcement. So when it comes to, uh, picking which one we go forward, um, I would really like to lean on staff to make sure that we understand which ones are easier to enforce. Otherwise it just becomes just text on a page and I would not like that at all because I think we will all lose. So implementation, so, um, I, you know, when we think about planning, I always, I can't help but think about the implementation component. So it's great to have these lofty goals, but what is feasible given the capacity constraints? Thank you.
Potentially a nice transition to the next slide.
Well, one, one more comment.
Oh, we have more comments, okay.
Just, just one from me. You did mention fee in lieu and I was very skeptical of fee in lieu regarding, around open space. Because I think it shifts costs and I was just skeptical. I think that could work with trees. I mean, if you're taking down a tree and, you know, provide funds for another one elsewhere, I would be much more open to that.
Great, that's, so you, you unintentionally did transition to the next slide.
You're welcome.
So, ha, no, uh, so the next set of things we're talking about is, um, tracking tree retention, removal, maintenance, permitting, uh, resources. And so, you know, there are some other levers, uh, that, um, you know, can look at more of the process behind it. Looking at that tree permitting system in detail, do you fee, do you not? Something, some resource has to come for enforcement, uh, uh, like was just mentioned. But also is there, all, that plays into another part is, okay, you have a development, it's approved, they have to, you know, preserve 20% or whatever the, the final code is of the trees. And so another thing we recommend is to, um, look at better, uh, tree protection measures during construction. And potentially an inspection process, um, which is again fairly common, uh, for tree protection, um, during construction, um, in cities. And that may or may not carry with it, uh, fees or fines or permits or other things, uh, for people who are not following the rules and are not, um, you know, meeting the intent of, of the preservation. Um, and so there are some other mechanisms that you consider, uh, to support the resources needed to enforce some of these other things. Around permitting, um, inspection, unpermitted removal, um, and, you know, mitigation fees in lieu, uh, which would, could be challenging, uh, for implementation because it requires more city management. Or what's been talked about also is like a work in lieu, like the, whoever's doing the development is responsible for performing the work in a approved public or institutional, uh, you know, piece of land, uh, to plant the trees, um, that they could not fit on their property. So that's kind of looking at more from the enforcement side of things of if you are gonna set up some rules, uh, you know, do you also set up some mechanisms to support, uh, their management and enforcement?
Commissioners, comments? Commissioner Sills?
Commissioner Sills, maybe this is coming later, but I'm just curious when the city, uh, opts to remove a tree, like let's say it's in the way, it's in the way of a power line or there's some other safety hazard, not necessarily that the tree is diseased or dying, but you know, there's, that has to be done. What is the city then responsible to do that's comparable to what we're asking here?
Cameron, you're gonna take that, or, I, I mean, I think, I think what we're recommending, um, is, uh, aligned expectations. And so the city should, uh, mitigate or replace any public tree that was removed, similar as you would expect a private, uh, landowner to replace a significant tree. And that also pairs with, how do you, going back to the right tree, right place, any projects move forward, should consider that long-term conflict and in 20 years, uh, avoid that conflict, avoid that removal because you planted the right tree under the power line or away from the vision clearance or you, you went through proper maintenance and pruning early on to avoid all those long-term removals and costs. So it's, it's, it's twofold, um, but, uh, you know, we, we would expect, uh, kind of a, a one-to-one replacement if possible or, you know, relocating it somewhere else as part of the, um, this overall assessment is the potential planting area. Um, and so, um, there are kind of gaps, uh, in the street tree network that could act as those kind of work in lieu. I don't know if, uh, Cameron, you have any other thing else to build on that of what's happening now versus what we're suggesting, you know?
Yeah, I would echo what Matt said about aligned expectations. As we, you know, have to address accessibility issues or issues with the sidewalk, like the example across the street, I would say it's, uh, very much like a case-by-case basis, depending on the existing, uh, landscape strip availability. Or, uh, you know, if there's a reasonable way that we can replace those trees and we know that they're gonna be healthy and not cause future conflicts, um, we can do so. But in certain instances, that can be more challenging.
Other comments? Commissioner Sills?
Commissioner Sills, um, I'm just kind of wondering like, what type of flexibility the system allows for? So, you know, um, there might be some neighbor conflict, for example, with a tree on someone's property that maybe is leaning to a certain degree that people feel unsafe or that owner wants to remove the tree, but the neighbor doesn't want them to because, I don't know, it affects like their garden. Like, there's so many different factors that, um, influence this. I'm just curious, like, who becomes the arbiter and like, how does the city determine, kind of, I mean, I guess going back to, mitigation or like limiting removal and you were talking about like, you know, everyone wants to come to a resolution. But it's not always about development, right? Like, there's a lot of other scenarios we could be talking about. So I'm, I'm just curious how that, uh, unfolds with all these new, um, regulations or, um, systems we would be putting in place.
It is, we're not including in our current recommendations and it would, it's very, I haven't seen an instance where the city steps in, in a, a private property dispute along trees. It's usually written that that is between those neighbors if it's not a, uh, like health, safety, like hazard tree thing. Like if it's like, uh, you're dropping leaves on my property or you're shading, like that is not for the city to get in the middle of. And so we wouldn't recommend that. But a, you know, I think I, I hear the, um, the uncertainty around the, the tree, the large tree removal permitting system and how that might, um, you know, come into conversations, um, in the public or, you know, for private property. So that I acknowledge there for sure. But I don't, I think you all have other things to do than, um, you know, uh, private property disputes amongst neighbors.
I would just say with our neighboring jurisdictions that have hazard and nuisance tree definitions that allow property owners to remove those trees, I mean, we wanna advocate responsible, um, tree maintenance on private property. But that's still, like what Matt was saying, it's still, um, a civil issue when it comes to adjacent property owners. Um, and case law supports that too with one property's tree, even if it does fit the hazard or nuisance definition to the adjacent property owners.
Do we have a hazard nuisance definition?
No, so to speak to, so to speak to your prior, um, question or comment, that would be, that would be, uh, depending on if we had a notification process or if we're limiting, trying to limit tree removal, not associated with development, with having an allowance of so many trees that could be removed, depending on the property size, how, on the whole range of whether it's a notification or a permit process, you would still wanna define what's a hazard or a nuisance so those trees can be removed. That kind of hearkens back to your, like your first question, your first comment, that you would build that into the code or put that in, define it in the code. But it, but case law does, yeah, doesn't support that the one property owner requires that an adjacent property owner, uh, or the city has no liability or responsibility in enforcing one to the other adjacent property owners' trees.
And then another question, do we know, and I'm sorry if this was already covered, how much of the tree canopy is on private land versus public?
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds on private?
I believe so, yeah, and that's, that's not included, oh man, you're pop quizzing me, it's at least two-thirds. It's in another presentation that is, I can pull up if you're very, very curious.
Yeah, I'd be curious to that and also like landmark trees and significant trees, like is that, I mean, it's probably about, around the same percentage?
We, yeah, we don't have that data. So the, the overall canopy coverage data is just looking at like boundaries of tree canopy and it doesn't, it doesn't do a full inventory of tree size and species of your whole city. There was an inventory of your street trees that noted size and species and health, that's just your street trees. So we don't have that level of granularity. But again, a, a large majority of your tree canopy is made up of very notably sized trees, is likely. Um, and maybe not all the way to the 30 or 32 inches, um, but they're, they're moving in that direction, right? It's not your six inch or eight inch trees.
Yeah, I, I guess I think, you know, where I was going with the neighbor disputes, I realize it could be civil, but like, there could be a situation where someone takes down a tree, right, and the neighbor like reports it to the city and then it's a violation, right? Like, or, you know, I'm just curious how this all plays out, um, as, you know, people really care about trees. So I, I, again, I'm just kind of wondering how this all, um, and I understand other jurisdictions have it. I grew up in Seattle, they're very militant about their trees, um, even as they have, I guess, a pretty low tree canopy compared to us. But I just, like, again, like I've seen a number of trees fall on people's houses. I've seen dead trees maintained, that were supposed to be maintained by a city, fall on people's houses, like there's, I think there's so much that we need to like show before we put all these requirements on people or create these new systems. And I just, I want us to do it right before we jump into just doing it because everyone else is doing it. I don't think those systems are necessarily the model. And I, I do agree with the goal of preserving tree canopy, I just really think we should think of more creative ways to meet people where they are. And also not discourage the type of, you know, community we wanna build, um, it, with more housing and that sort of thing.
Other comments? All right, I guess we proceed.
Go on, thank you. So, uh, like you heard from both the public focus group and the open house, uh, people were, uh, very interested in any support that they could be given. And, uh, key phrase, uh, up here as resources allow, obviously. No city or public works or parks department is flush with cash these days, so we get it. But as grants become available or if, uh, some of these other mechanisms come into place down the line, uh, we are seeing, um, some resources available. You know, we recommend, uh, again, offering options, uh, whether it be tree vouchers or giveaways, partnering with nonprofits, um, you know, other organizations, um, promotion, discounts, what have you. Tree water bag giveaways, uh, again, uh, helping people maintain those street trees, uh, and, and lowering, uh, costs or barriers there. Promoting, you know, existing, uh, fee-saving structures for reducing, uh, impervious surfaces. Promoting, you know, existing uh, fee-saving structures for reducing uh, impervious surfaces. You know, as it ties to stormwater incentives and stuff like that, you know, there's, there's, there's synergies there uh, for sure to take advantage of. Um, and then like, like physical support or financial support in tree care. Not everyone can prune a large tree, um, and not everyone can pay for it, or not everyone knows when to even do it. And so, you know, I think education is first, um, but uh, you know, as far as, you know, uh, equity is concerned or, um, you know, ability. Not everyone's on the same page and so are there ways to kind of level the playing field for those who need it most? And, you know, incentivize uh, care of uh, you know, those private trees or, or the street trees specifically. That are technically in a lot of uh, locations, the private landowner's responsibility to take care of. And so to kind of echo the conversation so far, if you are going to be requiring uh, private landowners to uh, be tree stewards. Of uh, right-of-way trees and street trees, um, is there anything out the city can do um, above and beyond the education that's coming? To help them uh, with resources or, or labor.
Commissioners?
I think, I mean, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Lover here, I'm sorry.
Yes, proceed.
Okay, sorry. Um, I think with this one, you know, in terms of like, resources are always great. I just really kind of wonder the. Like whether or not we have the funds to do it. And then when it comes to the investment, what is that? Where are we gonna get the most return for the investment, given uh, the strength resources that we have? So. I, I definitely think that when it comes to selecting and implementing, it should really be without cost benefit analysis. Again, like leaving on staff to see which ones we prioritize.
Commissioner Robson?
Um, if I can just add some personal data points from this, I live amongst um, a lot of rental properties. And um, those are becoming more and more common. And the first thing. I have noted in my neighborhood, when homes or townhomes are built. And um, the first thing they do is they, they cut down all the trees. Because there are um, a lot of maintenance and they don't want to maintain the trees. And as I have two um, very large apple trees that I didn't ask for and I don't want. Because they're very expensive to maintain. They're all kind of legal stuff around apple trees, who knew? Not me or we'd, wouldn't have this discussion. So I, I am very sympathetic about these ideas of if we're forcing people to be tree stewards. It would be great if we could provide. Resources for those people to take care of trees because we all love trees, but they're, they're not free. You know, they say money grows, doesn't grow on trees, but trees are also very expensive themselves. So if we, if we can make that possible, um. If, if resources allow, I think that would in fact be very valuable to um. To people who otherwise are getting rid of their trees.
Commissioner Westerbeck?
Brief comment, Commissioner Westerbeck here. I do like the uh, provided existing stormwater fee savings for reducing impervious surfaces. On commercial multifamily, um, so you know, sometimes it's possible, sometimes it's not, but. Those really do add up and on, on small and infill projects are my specialty. Sometimes there's an opportunity for that and um. The, the margins are so much lower that uh, stormwater fee savings can really go a long way if, you know, and you can get creative with the project. Maybe it's an opportunity for a rain garden or something like that. So I like that. Um, and maybe it wouldn't, uh. I guess it would cost the city some, but I'm not sure how many people would take, take them up on it, but that's attractive.
Others? Yeah, I, I think there's a general focus on the as resources allow portion of this. You know, we all know. Money's tight. And as Commissioner Westerbeck said, I do like the third one as well. My concern there is get the saving upfront and cut the tree later. So I think we need to be cautious about that. But uh, I, I do think it's important to educate people that those trees provide as much benefit as. In some cases, those expensive stormwater systems. So look at that alternative. Anything else? Commissioner Sills?
Commissioner Sills, um, I don't know how feasible this is, so I apologize for throwing it out there, but. I had a friend who like adopted a tree in a New York park and I think, like in memory of someone and. And so I think that uh, maybe there's an opportunity there where, um, I mean, obviously not on like private property, but. There could be ways to again, get creative about um, getting other funds to do that, but I totally understand that. Resources are tight, so um, maybe there's like a pilot program we can do to see if it picks up.
Is as an organization that helps people plant um, and maintain and care and you can do it as a group or you can do as a community or you can do it as a neighborhood. And so, yeah, there's a lot of um, community-based uh, solutions uh, that are out there as well to, to lighten the load. For those who uh, maybe uh, they struggle to, to keep up.
All right.
All right. So those were all the easy things to talk about. Appreciate you hanging anywhere with me. Um, so these are the more, uh, you know, heavier things, but. As uh, Commissioner Westbrook said, maybe these are desirable if they're seen as. Uh, kind of toolkit of options uh, for development. And so uh, things we are looking at from a, from a development code perspective is. Looking at, are there some zones or subzones or um, sub-areas? Where you increase the tree preservation percentage above the twenty percent? Do you, uh, like I mentioned earlier, offset a percentage of areas saved by, uh, you know, reduced parking? And put that back towards uh, tree uh, cover? Do you lower the exemption threshold of a twenty thousand square foot lot or treat subdivided lots? As the previous slot size when it comes to these codes so that um, you don't subdivide right below the threshold and then be able to clear cut. Uh, everything. Um, and then there's that kind of list of flexible options that could be applied. During review, whether that's a FAR, density bonuses, setback reductions or removals. Parking lot requirements, maybe it's like, oh, we, you know, if we squished our parking lot here and we didn't have to plant. Trees in our parking lot, uh, we can save this really valuable tree, cluster of trees over here. So maybe you're not required to plant any trees in the parking lot because you're already saving more valuable trees. So again, like, what are the tools and rules? That allow that flexibility? Um, and then so the last one is, is increasing tree size requirements. If you do cut down a, you know, number of larger notable-sized trees, whatever you want to call them or define them. You know, require planting uh, larger size um, trees like so. Typically, it's, it's an inch and a half uh, diameter or two inches diameter is the standard code. You can go up to three or four and those are going to be taller to ten-foot trees, twelve-foot trees, day one, when you plant them. Um, and so they're going to look nicer uh, when you plant them, um, and they're also going to mature quicker. Than the kind of smaller ones and, and catch up to that mitigation. So um, this is kind of a, a list of. You know, options that we think is important in that design and, and planning, review, development, you conversation. And so, you know, what do we want to, to make sure it's feasible, doable, still meets the goals, flexible? But also, um, you know, raises those, those middle dots up a little bit. To, to mitigate any uh, larger losses.
Commissioners? Commissioner Sills?
Commissioner Sills, I support it. I like flexibility. I think it makes a lot of sense. Um, yeah.
Others? Commissioner Robson?
I feel like this is where the rubber hits the road. Um, and so these, I like all of these. Because I feel like this is where we're going to get the most benefit when it comes to new development.
Other? Commissioner Westerbeck?
I just, I agree with the other comments. We've already gone over some of this and I think I've commented on this, so. Just didn't agree with the other commissioners.
Commissioner Lover here, um, I second, third, fourth that.
So I think you've got a pretty strong consensus on this list.
Yeah, that's, you know, uh, unpredictable, uh, but it's really. Great to, it shows you how much I know, uh, but I'm going to actually do what I said I was going to do and make it all green just because it's satisfying. This is to show consensus. But as we said, as Cameron said, um, you know, these will be uh, non-committal. Recommendations, maybe recommend mending some metrics for consideration. And that process for actually updating the code, um, we'll be able to, you know, have a deeper conversation and, you know, iterate through. But we wanted to kind of develop a à la carte package um, to consider uh, for, for being flexible.
Okay.
Great. All right. Moving right along, uh, so this is, you got a package that. Uh, I'm sure you, you read every word to, um, and that was on the vision of the future, essentially the goal. Long list of goals um, that were categorized. Um, this is, this is kind of an outline. Hold on, let me uh, make this a little bigger for you, sorry. This is the table of contents of ultimately the urban forest management plan that is up for adoption, right? And it's going to be long and you've seen all this content in green already. This is all the analysis, the inventory. You know, those overviews, the baselining, comparisons, the like, you know, context. And so just know you've, you've seen a lot of this content and we didn't want to just throw a, a large report at you to review. And, and wanted you to, to start thinking about these goals and knowing that um, once those kind of get baked in. We'll be working um, in the next few weeks um, on like the more detailed action items, the implementation. Steps to get to some of those goals. Um, so that's, that's what we wanted to focus on. Your feedback and just knowing that it's part of this larger picture. And uh, we'll be touching on it a little later. Our next steps is some things that are not going to be necessarily officially. Part of this plan, but will be supplemental, um, that will come likely earlier next year, which is like. The right tree, right place list that will come out. Um, that's part of this process, for example. So this is open-ended, um, kind of a, a catch-all for final comments. If you did have notes. Uh, or thoughts on any of the other goals and recommendations um, that you read through. We tried to include everything that was, uh, I think, uh, had, was worthy of a deeper discussion already, so the things we already talked about. But if there's anything else, um, this is going to give you an opportunity um, to capture your thoughts and feedback.
Commissioners? Commissioner Lover?
Thank you. I just uh, want to see if this is a good place to sort of put it in the parking lot per se around the um. The thing that we don't have to help with neighboring disputes because I can definitely see how from an enforcement perspective, when, when, and. When we start implementing these new policies or programs, uh, there might be some difference of opinion. So what needs to preserve or where the funds are going and whatnot and, um, and I'm sorry, I didn't write it down, but I, I think, um. What is the, what is the, the thing that we don't have that other municipalities do around like helping with disputes? When a neighbor removes a tree and then they start really arguing over that, uh, to help us manage that?
I don't know if that's something uh, Deb had mentioned, but what, what I had said is, is that's very uncommon for cities to step in. On a, you know, across a private property line. I think where you might see it and what was mentioned as an example by another commissioner is like when there's a street tree. That, you know, might be seen as damaged or risk or storm risk or hazard. That's where maybe um, you, you might want to set up some sort of process for assessment. Or uh, sending resources out to landowners to get assessed. That's kind of like the arborist resources. We were talking about of like, hey, when do we do something about this? Um, and so like, that's the interface. We can see kind of there being challenges. I know there were some example in Portland about. Where a city, uh, and maybe this is what the commissioner is referencing, uh, where a city said, no, don't cut down that street tree. It's fine. And then the street tree fell on their house, uh, and they're like, it's not fine. Um, and then there was a big argument there. So, you know, knowing where that liability lies, um, and those I think are all going to be important to kind of the implementation and. The communication with uh, private landowners and, and responsibilities there, but the, the private property, private property is, is, is not very common.
Okay, thank you.
So no arborist arbitration, huh? All right, moving on, uh.
Any other comments, general comments on any of the other goals you read? Um, otherwise we can kind of. Talk next steps and, and wrap it up. I know it's been a, it's been a long one, but it's been a great conversation. Um, and we really value your kind of feedback and support.
I, I think you've seen a lot of feedback along the way. I think some of the keys are that, you know, we first of all recognize resources are limited. And as lofty as our aspirations might be, they're tempered by the reality of resources. And uh, the, the second thing that we've really wrestled with is. Can potentially conflicting goals, you know, sure, preserve all the open space you want, but how does that help our housing goal? So we recognize there are compromises to be made and those are difficult conversations.
No, it's been great. Um, there's been a lot of really great feedback and discussion here. And again, um, one of the biggest values of having a plan like this is the process to create it. And, and starting to talk about it explicitly, um, and, you know, working through those conflicts and, and compromises. So I really appreciate the conversation. Um, so like I mentioned, uh, the future supplemental materials in addition to that plan. Like the official plan uh, with the goals and the action items, um, will be kind of formalizing that right tree, right place document. Organizing it to help different folks, uh, whether it's about tree trees or, um, you know, native trees or trees under power lines. Or private property trees, um, and that uh, review and work with. Some other efforts that are going on with the city around street section updates, ensuring there's adequate plantings for trees when you do. Have a large, um, you know, retrofit or, or street project, um, to make sure there, there is set up for success in that long term. And making sure the right trees are going in there. Um, we could potentially looking at installation details. To make sure that, um, again, when things are done, they're done right and thinking about long-term and, and in mind. And, you know, a visual guide or manual um, to help with maintenance expectations. So those are kind of. What we heard are the next step, first thing priorities around education. And, you know, allowing everyone to know, um, like was mentioned, like you want to do the right thing. You want to pick the right tree, you want to plant the right thing. You want to reduce your long-term burden, maintenance, um, what do you do? Um, so that's kind of the, the next step of supplemental materials going on.
Commissioner Lover, do you have a comment?
Yes, thank you. I think just, I don't know if this goes as a, as an official comment per se in terms of the ideas, but when I think about the implementation again. Like really making sure that there's some thought around adding capacity uh, uh, for the city staff and making sure that there's. Uh, we're looking at, you know, FTEs and make sure that being such a new, it's a new plan and that we are going to need. As, as, as many resources as possible to help answer questions and clarify. Basically like people are going to have questions when they see trees being removed and or not and. And oftentimes it's like that lack of response that creates even more of a, uh, symbolism, so. When it comes to the budget, like making sure that there's an understanding of what are the resources that are needed to make sure that there can be that compliance and implementation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think part of that, um, just to respond, is, is part of those educational materials talking about is maybe. Um, an FAQ site on your website. Um, and so it's not, you know, a city staff, uh, you know, answering the same questions over and over again. Um, and so it's not, you know, a city staff, uh, you know, answering the same questions over and over again. Um, but as we're hearing from staff, what are the most common things they're hearing? Um, we can help kind of pro, you know, preempt that, um, and have some common, uh, easily accessible answers to some of those things around expectations and things. So um, definitely hear you though. Um, we've had lots of conversations with, with public work staff and, and everyone has the same concern about capacity and, and resources and we want to be respectful of that. And just knowing that this is, um, this is a list of recommendations in order to hit a goal. It's not saying you must do this right now, right? And so it's just setting up a, a, a pathway um, for when, when resources, when efforts are happening to consider these things as part of, of the changes that are already happening. Um, and as, as resources allow, if you're going to plant trees, where do you do it? Or, um, you know, you're going to update this code, how should we do it? If we're going to update the street section, can we accommodate another foot in the cross-section? You know, it's, so it's, it's, it's helping other departments um, think through these things as they're, they're doing their day-to-day as well.
All right. That concludes the presentation, correct?
Uh, I think Cameron's going to just, uh, go over some like kind of logistics and next steps. Um.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Matt. A great discussion tonight. Really appreciate all the feedback. Um, so just in terms of kind of the schedule, um, looking forward, um, we are, are under a, a fairly tight window to, to move towards adoption toward the end of the year as, as Matt pulls up the timeline there. Um, so we want to make sure that, you know, you all feel comfortable at our next meeting on November nineteenth. Um, so we'll make sure to get out a full draft for your review a little earlier than some of our more recent packets have gone out. So you have time to really digest that. But as Matt mentioned, um, you know, ideally a large portion of the plan is familiar, uh, and stuff that we've kind of talked about at previous meetings. And then, um, you'll see, you know, a lot of the updates based on the feedback tonight to the recommendation section and, um, that implementation portion as well.
All right. Well, thank you for this very interesting presentation, uh, challenging topic. Uh, and we look forward to continued discussion. So thanks for all your hard work on this.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks for having us.
All right, that concludes our study session. Next item on the agenda is reports from members. Members have anything to bring to the group? Commissioner Westerbeck?
Not much to report, but I, I missed last week's meeting, um, because I was at the City of Lynnwood on a developer roundtable. And it was just interesting, um, they're, they're in Lynnwood, they're trying to aggressively tackle, along with their comp plan, a lot of stuff we've gone through over the last few years. So um, I felt good to, to know that we've already had a lot of those conversations and put a lot of the, the framework in place and have already seen that bear fruit, like through our pre-apps, uh, that I've heard about our numbers and things like that. So they're wrestling with that and they're trying to go in that direction. But, um, it was, it was, uh, fun to be among, uh, among other people, kind of giving them direction on that. But it's like they've got a, a good start. They've got good staff. And, um, it was, uh, it was just fun to see that it kind of reinforced that we've, we've been a leader. So that's nice.
Great, thank you. Anything else from members? Commissioner Sills?
Yeah, uh, kind of similar to that, but, um, I, uh, shared public comment, uh, at the City of St. Mammish um, council meeting yesterday. Um, they are, you know, considering um, a new town center with a lot of housing. And I just shared my perspective as a Bothell resident, um, that our downtown, I can't imagine our city without our downtown and um, all the awesome places we have, all the new neighbors we've, um, received as a result. Um, and, you know, how, uh, it's great recruitment to have awesome city staff and police officers and firefighters. Um, so I just encourage that community to look at us as, um, you know, we, we haven't have it all figured out, but um, that, you know, they should, um, consider, uh, you know, what we've been able to do, um, with smart urban development.
All right, thank you. Others? Seeing none, we'll move to reports from staff?
Uh, no reports from staff.
Oh, all right then. Well, then there being no further business, is there a motion to adjourn?
Uh, I move to adjourn the planning commission.
Commissioner Westbeck moves to adjourn. Is there a second?
Commissioner Robinson, I second.
Been moved and seconded that we adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the meeting is adjourned at seven fifty-seven PM. Our next meeting will be October twenty-ninth. We'll see you all soon.
Okay.